Seven, we can start. I'm going to call this meeting to an end. As you're able and willing, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on its own.
Good evening, thank you all for coming. We have had no one sign up to deliver public comments, so we'll move right into the report. The secretary may have a motion, please, to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of Wednesday, October 15th, 2025. Second, Lisa?
Lisa, thank you very much. Any comments or questions?
Perfection, as always.
Okay, all in favor? That is four oh. Those are now official. Report of the chair is next. Three of us attended the Maine School Management Association Fall Conference, week and a half ago now. Action-packed, full of really good breakout sessions on a variety of topics, including cell phones. For the benefit of the board, I typed up my notes from all of the talks that I attended, and I put them in a document that I've shared with you all. If you all want to go in and add your notes on whatever sessions you attended, that would be great. The rest of the board can have a look at that at their leisure.
Yeah, thank you. It was really, it was great.
Yeah, it was very, very good.
The keynote speaker was awesome, too.
Yes.
I was really bummed to miss it. Loved that conference.
Very timely, there was lots of presentations on cell phones, districts that have gone before, so it was helpful, it was great.
Okay, secondly, town officials, our next town officials meeting will be next Wednesday, November 12th, 8:30, at the new Elliott Town Hall, and they're very excited to have us attended, personally, those of us who can't go, so that we can get the tour of the new digs.
It's very lovely.
Okay.
Okay, that concludes.
Got to vote there yesterday.
Includes my report and brings us the report of superintendent.
Thank you. So, the first thing on my report tonight is a presentation on early childhood special education, Mr. Rooney and his team. So I'm going to turn it over to him and them.
Good evening, everyone. We're here to do a presentation tonight, but I brought some folks with me because I don't know if you know them. So I've asked our pre-K coordinator and Rollinsford coordinator, Lindsay Agneta, to come tonight, and Mrs. Beneskevich, our assistant director, and Ashley Mayo is one of our special education teachers for three- to five-year-olds, and Karen Szerzinski is one of our special education teachers for three- to five-year-olds. And then we have a special guest. I have sort of some different media to show you tonight, and one of the struggles that I had was, I've got parents of three- to five-year-olds, how can I get them to come and talk to the board about their experience? So we had some videos made, and I will show you those after the presentation. So let me give you the structure of the presentation. I'm going to talk to you a little informally at first, without the PowerPoint, about history and my experiences here when I first got here, and how we ended up here. Then we'll do the presentation, and then after that, I've got some videos to show you, and then you can ask questions or whatever you'd like to do. So let me tell you about my first time in, well, as an employee of MSAD 35, so it was five, five years and five months ago, that I walked into Elliott Elementary School on one of the first few days of school and met Nancy Leary, I already know her, but I was talking to Nancy Leary, and, you know, as oftentimes when I walk in, people tell me what they need, right? So she said, "What are you going to do about CDS?" And I said, "I can't really do a lot about CDS because it's a regulatory organization, and the school district has no really skin in the game at that time, the way the laws were written," and I'm wandering away from the microphone. So what do you do? So then I went up to Central, and Lori Dubois said the same thing. And so, you know, I probably moved on to something else because I was busy, it was my first week of work. But then CDS called me and asked if I would open up a classroom that they would pay for down in Elliott, and I was like, "Okay, this is our in." So we did that, and that's how Jackie Curtis ended up with us, Jackie Duglos now. And we had that sort of moderate needs program down in Elliott. We served kids from Elliott and South Berwick, and then we took some other kids, too, from other districts, and ran that program for, well, it's still running today. What sort of morphed out of that was, we had a speech pathologist that we needed to hire to deliver the services to those kids, and that speech pathologist had extra time because there was, like, eight kids. And so we actually started doing the speech and language services and the OT services on behalf of CDS, and then billing them for that. So our transition, you know, early adopters started the earliest time in the state. So then, last year, yeah, last summer, August, Andrew and I were talking, and, you know, there was some concern about staff and numbers and what could we do? And I got in touch with the state director, and they said, "I'm worried about my pre-K, I'm worried about staffing." And, you know, she said, "Scott, I am so surprised you did not sign up for Cohort One, because you were our earliest adopter, and if you had signed up for Cohort One, all these concerns you had would be taken care of." So we signed up for Cohort One on August 7th and opened our classrooms on September...
The 2nd, the 2nd.
Yeah, we had no staff in August. We had no idea what we were going to do, and it really was, I think people have heard about the unicorn hunt, when you're looking for that perfect employee. I have a whole herd of unicorns.
Yay!
And they've done a tremendous job. And so that sort of brought us to where we are. We did Cohort One, we were the largest cohort in the state, and I'm going to give you a presentation on it and then show you some videos. And if you have any questions, try to hold them to the end because I think I'll get distracted, and then you can ask questions of any of us. Does that make sense? All right. So the transition from three to five. Out of 50 states, Maine and one other state, and I don't even remember what it was, and I don't even want to know or remember what it was, because they were the only two states that did things this way. They created a quasi-governmental unit in the state of Maine to manage transitions for early intervention, which is zero to three, and then early childhood special education, which is three to five. In York and Cumberland Counties specifically, because as the population density was growing since the '70s, the system became completely overwhelmed. It became ineffective, challenges included staffing shortages, limited preschool capacity, and service coordination. And the biggest flaw in that system was that in special education, so much of what we do happens in the general education setting. CDS had no general education setting to program for kids. So it sort of was a flawed system. And as a result, three- to five-year-olds were underserved. So what did the legislature do about that? So the legislature passed a law to transfer the responsibility of three- to five-year-olds special education from CDS to the SAUs. And the timeline began on July 1st, 2024. Of course, our timeline began on August something, 2024. And then the full transition is required by July 1st, 2028. Here's the confusing part for people, is it says SAUs can volunteer to join transition cohorts starting in 24, 25. The volunteer part is what year they do it in, not a decision whether we're going to do this or not. So, and the aim of that was to strengthen local control, integrate and expand services with public preschool. You know, it was to ensure equitable access to a free and appropriate public education, or a FAP for all three- to five-year-olds, to deliver their services in the least restrictive environment, we're going to talk about that in a minute, because that looks differently for different places for this age, and to build inclusive preschool programs within the public schools. You folks had already had general pre-K for 50 years, so it was an easier transition for us. And then to align Maine with the national best practices and improve quality through local oversight. So our responsibilities are to identify children through Child Find, develop and implement IEPs for the three- to five-year-olds, provide or contract for special education and related services for those students, collaborate with CDS and the DOE during phase transition, and participate in readiness, planning, and professional development. What does that look like in operation? It looks like me sitting at a meeting every two weeks with Ryan, or the former superintendent, or whoever was appropriate at that time. I'm not going to say learning, I'm going to say thought partners, because Andrea and I already had preschool experience in New Hampshire. So we were able to contribute to those discussions and help problem solve, and then we stopped those meetings last June, although we've been invited back. Not because we have deficiencies to address, because they want the other cohorts to learn from what we do, and we have a brand-new coordinator, she said, "I'd like to join a cohort," and the DOE gave her permission, and so we're going to start those meetings So the LRE, when it comes to a three- to five-year-old, is a little different. We have classrooms, and I'm going to talk about that in a minute, but also, if a student attends a daycare, and that's determined to be their least restrictive environment, then we will provide the services within that daycare setting when appropriate. Now, I also want to get them into, kids into school early, right? I want them to have a school experience in addition to that, because that's going to help their transition when they turn four and enter the general pre-K. So families continue to receive their services at no cost and retain all their individuals with Disability Education Act rights, and children under three, zero to three, this is where people get confused, early intervention is zero to three, early childhood special education is three to five. The CDS retains responsibilities for the zero to threes, and we just take the three to fives, which is pretty similar to the states that surround us. And the collaboration among schools, CDS, and childcare provider remains key and important. There are issues that come up that we're talking to the site directors or the, wow, or the assistant director at the state, or the director at the state, so. Some of the challenges and considerations across the state, but also here, recruiting and retaining qualified special educators and related service providers, therapists, expanding preschool capacity, especially rural areas, not really an issue for us, maintaining service quality during the transition, and funding transportation and ensuring smooth coordination across agencies. I also want to point out that the parents of the three-year-old, these pictures are real, these are your kids, and these are your staff. The parents have graciously given me permission to use these photos in the presentation, so they're real. So where are we right now? We finished our transition in Cohort One, and we're still breathing and standing. We currently have two, we have two three-year-old sessions at Central School, that's what Ashley teaches, and one in Elliott, and that's Karen. The FAP offering, which is the length of the day for the state for a three-year-old, is six hours a week, we go about seven and a half, maybe, give or take. And then on the days that the three-year-old programs aren't in session, they're in session three days a week, the special education teachers are delivering the SDI in the four-year-old general pre-Ks, or they're evaluating students for eligibility. And then also, you already know, we have a program for students with significant needs in Elliott. Staffing, this is interesting. So right now you have three special education teachers, two speech pathologists, one three-day week coordinator, contracted OT, PT, speech, and BCBA as needed, five educational technicians, transportation staff, but then 34 staff across this district that have involvement in that pre-K program, a portion of their salaries are billed to the transition account. So we, you know, if somebody's doing school age for this amount of time and pre-K for this amount of time, that's billable. And even the classroom teachers in the general pre-K, we do a ratio of special ed to regular ed, and then bill that portion, too. So it's a complex system. Ryan and I talk a lot about how to do that. How's it funded? Funding for students is made available during the year of the expenses. So this isn't a budget expenditure kind of thing, this is, they give you the money and you spend it. Four times a year, we perform a child count, that count is provided to the state. The state issues a payment in the amount of about $25,000 per student, there's an extra S there, I'm sorry. For example, we just did your quarter-two child count, and your current count is 45, 45 times about 25,000 equals about 1.125 million annually, and that number swings around, like, with that number today, maybe a different number, a higher number the next time we do a count. Because the other thing that happens is, where everything else is done by what grade you're in, three to fives are what age you are. So you have rolling admission coming all throughout the year. I know that we have 16 kids turning three, and I know where they are and where they're going to be, so we've already got that information to plan with. And even if our expenses run over the allocated amount, the state will still make up the difference. One of the benefits to being Cohort One, that other cohorts don't have access to right now, is to access a fund to buy classroom furniture and supplies for all of the special ed pre-K classrooms and all of the general ed pre-K classrooms. I reached out to the state for that number to tell you, they gave me a number, but I'm not sure if the number's our number or the total for Cohort One, I'm thinking it's our number, it was just shy of $200,000 that we were able to spend. And what we were able to do was to take that age-appropriate furniture that we were replacing and move that to other classrooms for that age. Then a minotaur, which is a bus, kind of, except not really, you have different rules, was purchased to help transport students from services when placed in a daycare setting, or if they just need a ride to school. Here's your numbers from last year. Our expenditures were, you know, $1,024,000, our revenues are $1,049,000, we were $25,000 in the black at the end of the year. So what they promised worked, did happen. So then I just put the benefits, you know. Early identification and support addresses developmental delays early, it improves their cognitive and academic outcomes, there's enhanced communication and social skills. I'm not going to go over the whole slide. We had increased independence and self-confidence, family empowerment, involvement, and a smoother transition to kindergarten. I wish the board could have the experience of watching one of these three-year-olds walk through the door in September, and everybody's a little stressed, and then about a month later, everything's settled down, kids are following routines, kids are following directions, and they're really cute, too, so. And then, so I'm going to take questions in a minute, but I really wanted you to understand some of the impacts that you had supporting us in doing this. So Ryan's going to try to bring this up, I'm sorry. So this is Andrew, before that comes up, before he's hit play, the star of the video is sitting in the back, oh, wrong video, that's okay. The next video, Andrew's in, because he made it, but he showed up tonight to support us. So that's Andrew Robertsman-Austen, and then, oh, here we go. So we made a couple of videos for you.
Andrew Robertsman-Austen, I want to introduce you to me. We began Elliott Elementary in the 2020-2025 school year in a self-attained pre-K classroom. This was unexpected, but very long. We started seeing the first signs of love as Matty was only one years old. He loved making patterns, organizing things, and engaging with toys, weren't figuring out how they worked, but actually played with them. His eighteen-month evaluation confirmed speech and social development in place. Unfortunately, it took us until May of 2023 to start the early prevention process. It was November before, and learning about case management, breastfeed care, and other community services. Well, CDS provided some therapy, only lasted a few months, and support for the parent and the foster model, it was usually by tele-help and not that impactful. Even also had daycare at one place from 2022 to 2023, and another for 23 to 24. In August of those years, we were told that he wasn't going to be welcome back because allegedly he was acting out of our management plan. This feedback was in spite of any evidence to back mine, and fairly contradictive the updates we got from those facilities. I scrambled in the fall of 2023 to find a new daycare, two places I toured, never called back, I mean, we hated it. I can only forget hindsight that they saw the signs and they were not going to accept it. During this entire time, I was placed on the end of life, even parents, with their diversion son, and insisted that was a transition. Over time, it was of essence, it was using our daycare, and that harsh move over the first districts to transition away from CDS. That's our story on my shelf, it's been a journey for us all, and I'm really appreciative of the honors to Scott, Jackie, Transportation, and EES Team. He is welcomed, appreciated, and he's grown so tremendous in the last two years that I pray that a lot of that success will be done. Thank you very much.
And I would like to start by saying thank you so much for allowing our district to be one of the first to take on the CDS responsibilities for three-to-five-year-olds. Because for my family, this has been sincerely a life-changing. Before the program, Matty, who was at the time my foster son, and now my adopted son, had so many destructive behaviors in his daycare classroom. They were very, they were passionate and empathetic about the trauma that he had come through before he came to us, but as a regular daycare, they just were not equipped to handle the literally constant behaviors. And eventually, they told us that without services from CDS, we wouldn't be able to meet, and he wouldn't be able to remain there, meaning unsafe concerns for the other students. I was also very concerned, which is why I had been fighting long and hard with CDS to get services listed on his IEP. It was certainly a battle on my end, but I later found out that even his case manager at CDS was getting reprimanded by Herdoss for agreeing to include services on his IEP, even those services that everyone on the team would agree needed. In the end, after all of that work to get those services on his IEP, the number of services that we actually bought was zero, because some waitlists were over a year long, and a couple, it was even clear that, like, you never get them, you see the age out of the three-to-five program before the services became available. Now, Matty, at that point, he was only, he was only three years old, but he already knew that he was the bad kid. It broke his confidence, it broke my heart. It was starting to break the bank, because if he wasn't in daycare, I couldn't work. Then, three months later, I get a call from Scott saying that Matty's eligible for this meeting program, and I remember literal tears of joy when I was talking to, I think it was Andrea, about the program and all of the services that were available, because all of the services that Matty needed were available. So a couple weeks later, Matty joins the program in the marvelous Miss Mayo's class, and he doesn't have a symbol back there, not on here. And instead of fighting with CDS, I felt like I was working as a team with the school to figure out what was going to work for everyone. It felt like a miracle. This year, he's in Mr. Boy's class, and he's keeping up academically, he has friends, and most importantly, the lead, he doesn't feel like the bad kid anymore. It was life-changing. I did have one more thought I wanted to mention, because as a CPNA who works at a nonprofit, I am one of those people who cares about budgets. I don't know much about the town's school budget or public work, but I do know that without this program, the Matty that would be in our school system right now would be the Matty whose only classroom skill was to act out what's left of it. And that kind of thing is a key that requires a lot of services, and those services and resources cost money. But now, because we have this program, it's not only for your district, but I think it's actually saving our district money, because we're getting kids who are so much better equipped to be in a classroom setting than they otherwise would have been. So as a taxpayer, if you've got in board and all of the staff, we're saving us money. And as a mom, thank you so much for creating an environment where kids like Matty who are struggling are given the tools and the skills they need to really thrive in the classroom and for the rest of this really years.
I don't know if I can follow up with much, other than that was our presentation, and nice job, Miss Mayo. So, you know, any questions or information, we're here to answer those for you?
Scott, I have a question about the funding model, which is awesome right now. Is there any talk of it changing going forward? As far as we know, CDS is going to continue to give us the money.
So the way, I don't know if this offers some reassurance, so what they've done is, you know, they've budgeted, so they've taken that three-to-five portion of the budget and shifted it into the cohort model. There is no, I mean, things change politically when parties change this and that, but there's no discussion about ending this. I think one of the biggest changes is the classroom supply money is no longer available.
Thank you.
Excellent. Congratulations, and thank you to everyone involved in the program, and thank you for coming and speaking as well.
That was great, thank you so much.
All right. I had to watch it earlier, I was crying.
Gosh, you're tearing up. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you. You're not going to stay for the rest of it?
It's so exciting. So the next item on my report tonight is the results of the South Berwick election. As you can see, Mr. Long is sitting here next to you. Yes, today, congratulations, Mr. Long, we're so glad you're here.
Run out of post, work every time.
And also the newly-elected president of the MSMA.
Yes.
MSBA.
MSBA, sorry.
Which you failed to mention during your report, so.
I did. Before we move to the next item, I just want to thank the voters of South Berwick for their continued confidence in me, I appreciate that.
Absolutely. I asked Ryan if he could just give us a quick update on the final October 1 enrollment
So in your packets, you should have this, it's a one-page, this is our certified enrollment that we sent to the state of Maine. The top portion is special education, I'm not going to talk about special education and get into those numbers, but I'll just kind of focus on the bottom grid, which is our actual child count. So the top grid is our current numbers, and then the little grid underneath kind of shows where we were last year at the same time, and then shows you the differences. Our attending enrollment is down about 25 students. A large portion of that is Rollinsford, we had about 142 students from Rollinsford last year, we only have 126, 127 this year, so a large portion of that, which is why if you look at our subsidizable enrollment, the ones that are in our district only went down nine. So a large portion is the Rollinsford decrease, and then we have our own decrease. Again, either 25 students or nine students, however you want to look at it, across all the grade levels, really wouldn't make a change in our staffing or anything like that. And then if you're looking to kind of add everything up, if you're kind of a numbers person, just keep in mind, you only really need the two far right columns, which is counts for K to eight and counts for nine to 12, and then you need the pre-K column. It gets a little bit confusing because they have a K to two and then they have a K to eight. And the K to two students are also included in the K to eight numbers. So if you try to start adding things up, it looks like, oh, we've got way more students reported out there on the right than we actually have. It's because the K to two account gets duplicated in that K to eight column. Does anybody have any questions on overall enrollment?
These are what are going into the ED 279 calculation.
That is correct.
Yep.
And you can see another important number when we start talking about the ED 279 calculation is the economic status. You can kind of see that it had an overall change of like 0.5, 6%. So if that number swings up or down, that can mean either more subsidy or less subsidy. It looks like that's going to kind of hold pretty true to where we were last year. So that wouldn't make a significant change to the subsidy that we're going to receive for the students that we have.
Thank you.
The next thing on my report is just a quick update. We had talked at the last board meeting about a draft calendar for next school year. You guys provided me with some feedback. And then after that meeting, I met with the PVA. They provided actually some very similar feedback. And we also talked about it at our administrative team. So I think we are zeroing in on a pretty good draft that is going to be agreeable to everybody. And then we'll just sort of wait and see how things go with Stanford and negotiating with the whole regional unit. And so I won't probably have a sort of final version for a few months once we get that group back together.
Okay.
And see the, those five out of sync days and where those are going to fall for different people. So more to come on that.
Great.
And that brings us to the student report.
Okay, so most of our fall sports are winding down, but the start of winter sports will be November 17th, and the football semifinals will be this Friday, November 7th at, I believe.
Westbrook.
7th, yeah?
7 p.m. Yep.
Okay, at Westbrook. And for extracurriculars, the Marshwood Interact Club just went trick or treating for Kansas past Friday, and all of the volunteers got over 300 non-perishable items for the local food pantry. Student government just scheduled and will be having an executive board meeting with Dr. Gowers next week, I believe. And they have a full government meeting tomorrow. And for student life, students have been discussing the potential phone restrictions and what it could mean for classes, communication with parents, and transportation coordination. The quarter has just wrapped up, so people are kind of moving into the second quarter and finishing out the semester. And PSAT scores will be released tomorrow for juniors and sophomores.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great, thank you. The one item of correspondence, which I'll mention, of course, is that we received as the entire district, the correspondence from Mr. Calverly. And we have an executive session scheduled for the end of this, tonight's meeting to figure out our forward plan on that. Reported the committees, FNF will next meet on the 19th of November, prior to our November 19th meeting. We have to figure out the timing on that because we're also doing that session on the cell phones. But we'll figure that out. Ed policy, met on 10/29, and cell phones was a big portion of the discussion. And we have that policy here for first read tonight. Who else was there and wants to say anything else about the ed policy meeting?
Well, like you said, the vast majority was on the cellphone policy, which I think we'll get a little bit more discussion once we have the first read.
Get to that.
Yes. Okay, great, thank you. And then lastly, well, SSCL met earlier this evening. Just want to talk to us about that.
Hi, Ken. We had a lovely group, a good sized group tonight. And really just sort of went through what's happening in each building across the district. And it's so many good things. A farmer's market through Chartwells at Great Works. It was a good success with lots of like local fresh foods that kids got like fake money and could shop a little farmer's market. Super cute. The community refrigerators at the middle school and the high school are starting to be up and running, which is just a fantastic resource for the community and a great way to use extra resources that we have here. Boys Run Club at Central in Great Works, some staff wellness. Some cool new things happening at Elliott Elementary. The whole kindergarten teaching group is new, so like lots of new ideas and energy there. More outdoor learning opportunities and updates. And then a really cool glow run at the Great Works School that was a good success. And I think the biggest takeaway from tonight's meeting was like there's so many good things happening and we wish everybody could know, like all these little things happening across the district. But also, so many of these things are like being spearheaded by staff members just sort of saying like, I'll do it, I'll try it, and just try something new. And these groups have like lots of involvement and family support, and so good things are happening. Yeah. Anything else?
I just liked a lot of the comments on how so many more community members are coming in, parents and grandparents, and just kind of getting back to involving everybody at the school, which really felt so good to hear.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to new business. And the first item of new business is, may I have a motion, please, regarding the first reading JFCK.
I move to approve the first reading and discussion of policy JFCK, student use of personal electronic devices.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's have some discussion. I actually made some notes on the second page of the policy in three and five and six. The first one is at the end of the paragraph three. Including but not limited to telephone calls and electronic messages sent via technology platforms on devices that are owned and controlled by MSAD 35. Was that intended to include student laptops that are approved by us as well, but that are owned by the students? Or was it intended to just include devices owned by?
That's a good question. I would assume if the intention of that is that they could instant message via computer, which is what that says to me, that I would think it would be owned or approved.
Okay.
Because that's the language we have on the first page, right?
Yes, exactly.
Because we didn't, we had limited conversation in policy, but there didn't seem to be appetite for stepping away from the bring your own device.
Right.
Which we have about, I think about 150 students that bring their own devices. Some districts that have gone to a bell to bell ban have also banned bring your own devices, and everybody uses the Chromebooks when they're at school. We didn't have much conversation about that.
Okay.
Could, but we didn't.
Okay.
I mean, could we just get rid of the last part of the sentence? Messages sent via technology platforms on all devices, any device. It does say but not limited to, but I feel like we need to be more specific.
Yeah, my suggestion would be to strike the words and controlled.
Yeah.
And replace it with or approved. So that it reads as that are owned or approved by MSAD 35, which is consistent with the language elsewhere in the policy.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's what it says on the front. We'll talk about.
All right.
Personal electronic devices are not issued, that are not issued or approved by MSAD 35 shall not be available or accessible for the duration of the school day.
Maybe we just use that same exact language.
Issued or approved.
Issued or approved.
Issued or approved. I like it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That's great. I actually had a question about number five, where it says that administrators may confiscate any personal electronic device seen or hurried in the student's possession. There's no, I couldn't glean from that whether that was like a permanent confiscation. Throw in trash.
Definitely not.
Drop it in a bucket of acid. Okay, so do we want to add language that suggests that the child gets it?
Temporarily. Temporarily.
I suppose it's possible.
Is there a separate policy, JK, probably student discipline, or a procedure that will outline sort of consequences for violating this policy? Or is that a discussion that was had at the policy meeting? Or is that anything that policy felt strongly needed to be in here? Or is it anybody here feels strongly should be discussed?
I feel like it's a bit of a tender.
Yes, yes.
Kind of like a tender line to walk right now. And I do feel like, especially initially, it will be important that there are some like clear boundaries.
So what are they?
For the inevitable sneaks that are going to try to happen that is developmentally appropriate in many ways. But I feel like it's important if we have a policy that there's sort of a clear consequence.
So JFCK dash R, which we will get to next, actually does talk to that. Consequences for violating.
Okay. So should we have language?
Can we hold that question to?
Yeah, we can move back around.
Yes.
JFCK dash R?
Yes. I was just thinking, if there's language in the procedure, should number five reflect that? Which we can get to. I see consequences here.
Yeah, it says in the student subject applicable discipline procedures.
Do you want to just say maybe?
Per JK.
Yeah. Administrators will follow. It'll be subjective to the district policies JK is what this procedure says. So including but not limited to, but does this say management of their restrictive management for their electronic devices? So either we should have in the procedure that the phone's going to be taken and it needs to mirror what it's saying in number five, what it says in the procedure? Yes.
Yeah, tell me if you think this works. If we simply add at the end of that student would be subject applicable discipline procedures per policy JK?
Yes.
So we'll add that language?
Per policy JK.
JK.
To the end of, we're still looking at JFCK.
We haven't gotten into dash R yet.
Yes.
We'll talk more about that when we get into dash R.
Well, we got the cross reference on here, so that's good.
Yeah.
Good.
And I think the way that JK is written, it gives each school the latitude to develop it.
Oh, true, right.
For their own setting.
That's true.
Yes. Great.
The last thing I had was in number six, and this is kind of nerdy. In the event that a student is authorized to have a personal electronic device in their possession, rather than on them.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything else on this?
Do you want, maybe you want to say?
To use.
Yeah, utilize an electronic device at school.
Yes, yes.
Instead of have on them, yes. So that could be for the exception.
To utilize.
That a student is authorized to utilize an electronic device at school.
There we go.
A personal electronic device.
Just that last sentence in six, we're starting with.
In the event that a student is authorized.
Is authorized to utilize a personal electronic device.
Device at school.
At school.
Yeah, okay, that's good. That's good.
Yeah, I like it too.
Okay, so then we don't need to in their possession anymore.
Right.
No.
At school, okay.
That's better.
Yeah, it's better, easier.
Anything else?
Earbuds and headphones, was that a hard policy when you felt strongly in number one definitions? Personal electronic device means?
Earbuds and headphones. We did have a small discussion about that.
We did.
We did bring that up.
Yeah.
And I think there were suggestions that headphones could be purchased to use with Chromebooks so that it would eliminate the have to policing the earbuds.
And stuff, okay. Right, like if we need, like we have some that we want for testing. And like we could have some available if there was a need for them to be plugged into the Chromebook, I think.
Okay.
I think that would, what we talked about was that that might be preferable than, then. I mean, part of what we want is for kids to be unplugged.
Right.
At school, right?
Right.
If they're listening to music in their earbuds, then they're not connecting the way we would want them to be, don't you?
So maybe a dumb question, but so they're currently accessing music through their phones. But if they don't have their phones on them, are they going to be accessing music through their computer?
Well, that's what we're kind of saying is that's one of the reasons to not have the headphones.
But a lot of students are required to have headphones for like working on IXLs or whatever.
So this is saying they would have headphones that they could plug into their Chromebook supply.
Supplied by us.
Right, that we would purchase some that teachers would have available if they needed it for testing or, right. Right, if they had like a, like an IXL platform or Alexa platform that was reading to them and they needed headphones to use.
So moving away from like student supply to school issue.
It sounds like we have a lot of.
We have some, like what shape they're in since COVID and we'll have to figure it out.
And that they're really inexpensive, right?
They are.
Yeah.
Or two dollars, yeah.
Yeah.
Did you guys have conversations at the, did you hear anything at the conference in those cellphone focused workshops about earphones, earbuds specifically? Okay, so this goes along with that?
That's why both allowed. They baffle out.
They baffle out headphones. Airpods.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
How are they using?
And they were restrict this one. Their thought was if they don't have them, if their phones aren't on them, then they're only going to be using them with their, with their Chromebook.
It's true.
However, they don't allow personal computers and MacBooks or anything to be brought in. It's all.
Chromebook only.
Chromebooks.
Oh, that's the trade off.
So that's the difference.
I mean, the earbuds are also associated with early childhood hearing loss and just teenage hearing loss.
And how about, let's not even talk about the 5G issue. Oh, cancer's coming down the pipe too. That's another conversation. Brain cancer.
One over the other personal issue.
And then there was just some discussion too with the personal, which we should keep in mind, with personal MacBooks, they can still access a lot of platforms even if their phones are shut off. So is that going to require any monitoring and policing or from teachers to be able to say, oh, well, now I'm just messaging or getting on stuff? So I don't know how people feel about that.
I guess my question with like bringing in personal laptops, it's also like a question of equity and some, like it differentiates some students from others. So what is the purpose of bringing in their own MacBooks or whatever else? If everyone has problems, they should be good enough for everyone. And it's easier to just manage one tool over a bunch of different ones.
I do feel like there's lots of merit to the discussion, but I do wonder if it's a separate conversation from the, yeah, from the cell phones. But I think there's definitely merit to having that discussion. And then maybe if that were to change policy wise, then we could go back and add it here. Because I would definitely want to include Naime Sayed, our check director, in that conversation in terms of like the technology planning and the budgeting and like they sort of count on kids bringing a certain number of their own devices. And I don't know exactly how that plays into their planning, but I want him to be involved in that conversation.
But I think it's definitely worth a conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay, are we ready to move to a vote? So we're voting on a first read of JFCK with the following changes. Number three will. Number three will say that are issued or approved by MSD 35. Number five will say temporarily confiscate, and at the end it will say per policy JK. And number six will say authorized to utilize a personal electronic device at school, et cetera. With those changes, all in favor? Okay, that's five oh. And that was a very robust discussion, thank you.
So just to clarify, this is a first read.
Yes.
And this the first, this doesn't mean it's a policy yet.
Nope.
It's the first read, and then the next step is the big community discussion. Can you, do you want to speak on that a little bit, Heidi?
Sure, so the intention is, the reason we decided initially we would have the first read tonight and then not do the second read next meeting, but wait until the first meeting in December to do the second read, which is when the adoption happened, is to allow some time for community conversation around this, which to be fair is starting, like we've had, you know, we have about over 100 people reading Anxious Generation. We're running some book clubs, some kids are reading Anxious Generation here at the high school. They're using some portions of it in advisory. But we wanted to create a forum where we could hear from people and they could express their support, concerns, questions, anything like that. So the idea is two weeks from now on November 19th, prior to the board meeting from six to seven, we'll have an, you know, essentially an open forum. We'll give the board an opportunity to sort of explain sort of our why behind this policy and the research that we've been doing and what our concerns have been. And then allow the public to have some time at the microphone and just to ask questions or to just say, I think this is great, I'm so glad we're doing this, or I can't believe you're talking about this, this is crazy. Whatever it is they want to say, I just think people want to have the opportunity to speak. And and, you know, we want to be able to hear from them. And then that will give us, we moved the policy meeting that was supposed to be on the 19th to the 20th so that we can incorporate that community feedback into our revisions through policy.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
And anybody is invited?
Yes. Anybody's welcome, I was thinking about it today when I was driving. And I think, I think what I'd like to do is some sort of a Google form signup for people where they can just say, yes, I'm planning to come so that we can, I mean, I just literally don't know if it's going to be 14 people or 140 people. And obviously, if it's 14 people, we'll be fine in this space. And if it's 140, we'll probably want to be in the CAF. And if it's 400, we might want to be in the auditorium, you know? So I just think it'd be good to get a ballpark of how many people are talking about that want to come talk about this for an hour.
Zora, I'm sure that there's lots of chatter. I know my son is not thrilled I'm having this conversation tonight. But can you make sure that the word gets out to students somehow, that they are invited to that conversation?
I've already reached out to the student government and made it available for other people as well.
Great, great.
It'll be a good conversation to have, I mean, we've been talking about it for a long time. And, you know, we're actually lagging behind. We were talking about this in wellness, a lot of other school districts and states, actually. Full states, like including New Hampshire, who have already gone completely device free during the school day bell to bell. So it, you know, and the feedback has been, I would say, well, you guys went to the workshops around it, but the feedback has been quite positive all around.
Even from the students.
Even from the students. So it's interesting.
I know, it's hard to imagine now, but.
Yeah, I was really encouraged, there were three students that were in one of our clinics, two girls and a boy. And not that that matters, but sometimes it does because.
And they ran the gamut of like.
Ran the gamut of.
Activities.
Activities and everything.
Yeah.
But the overall response was, I can't believe they were going to do this, but I didn't realize how much I needed it. And I actually talked to people I've never talked to before. I remember that one student saying, and doing things I never imagined doing. And the connection that these students are having amongst themselves and the inclusivity of it all was just mind blowing. So that was really positive. And it might even be worthwhile to even have a student from York because they have this policy now bell to bell. And to get their.
That would be great. And parents.
And parents.
And parents.
I can work on that, see if we could get.
And maybe an educator or someone presentative of the staff.
We have some parents here at Marshwood that teach in York.
Oh, nice, oh, perfect.
Yeah, I can see if I can get a little panel of folks from York that might be able to come on the 19th.
That would be cool.
Rebecca and I had also talked a little bit a while ago about like just the safety of not having them in school as well in case of emergencies and that it might be beneficial to have a law enforcement officer talk about the safety benefits of not having them in emergency situations.
Oh, that's a great idea.
Because I know I've also talked with some parents who felt like they wanted their kids to have their phones.
Because of that, but it's actually the opposite, yeah, in reality.
During their presentation, they had like letters from law enforcement that they presented to the community that was effective, yeah.
They had done extensive, extensive research and shared with us all their documentation, which was really powerful.
And their data, their research, and it was good, yeah.
Yeah, that resource page that they shared was great.
Yeah.
Maybe we could duplicate it for the, for, yeah, people who want to, yeah.
I might be able to even attach it to their Google form.
Oh, that's a great idea, so people could go see in advance of the meeting. Yeah, that's a great idea.
They had a lot of frequently asked questions.
Yeah.
O F A Q.
That was, was it RSU 5?
21, I would say.
No, 21 is Kenny Bonner.
Wasn't it one?
Was it one?
One.
Yeah, I think it was one. BAF, was it BAF and?
Yes, one.
One, okay.
Okay, may I have a motion please with regard to the first reading of JFCK dash R?
I move to approve the first reading and discussion of policy JFCK dash R, student use of personal electronic devices procedures.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions about the procedures?
So I'll start this part of the conversation because this is the part that I feel like we haven't gotten resolution on, that we really need the board to weigh in on, which is the how. So there's kind of, there's kind of two, we went to two different presentations that were doing this two different ways, right? So there's the, I call it the Marshwood Middle School approach, which is the, it's got to be away, it's locked in your car, your locker, your backpack, it's off, you don't see it. But we're not collecting them, that's sort of one pathway. And then the other pathway is that we we sort of restrain those devices in some way, either those cell phone lockers or the yonder pouch bags, which are kind of the two, seems like those are the two popular solutions that other surrounding districts are using. They're collecting the cell phones at the beginning of the day, giving them back at the end. Or the kids are locking with pouches at the beginning of the day. Pouches have cell phone, earbuds, smartwatches, everything goes in, lock it up when they leave, they unlock it. And those seem like the two sort of lockup methods versus the on your honor methods. And I have no opinion about this, so I'm just going to let you guys debate it.
I have a strong opinion. And I will say that being a parent of teenagers, I know that it is not popular. And I was actually sort of of the mindset initially, like just let them, let them be responsible and it will teach them how to, how to regulate on their own and they should be having this responsibility. I was definitely of that camp after reading Anxious Generation, after looking at the data that just like the data says, that just developmentally isn't true, it's just not true. And even if the cell phone is in the backpack, there is still literally like a brain, your brain is still going off, and you know, you just try to sit in a meeting. And how many times have you thought in an hour, like, I want to check my phone, I want to check my phone? So just having it in your phone gives the brain a response. And so after reading the data, I personally feel strongly that if we are going to have a procedure, we need to have some sort of a locking or regulatory situation. And I know it's going to be unpopular with students, but I feel strongly if we're saying that the data matters and we're saying that wellness matters and we're saying belonging matters, it's talking out both sides of our mouths if we don't help students help themselves. That's my spiel.
Well said, and I agree.
I wholeheartedly agree. We all know developmentally, at that age, they can't restrict themselves, they can't say no. It's just the way that, I mean, look at how we are, and we are already developed. So why do we want to put that on them when we can take it away? And then the pressure's gone from the teachers having to monitor and having to, I shouldn't say police, but in a way. And that temptation, that temptation of, like you said, grabbing it. And that's what we're trying to avoid, and we want to encourage wellness and people to interact with one another and not have to have to think about it. And what are the, what are all the things that we talked, that we learned too in BAF? Library books, more library books were taken out, people were reading more. There were some of the other, there were so many students.
No fail rates for classes that they'd always had fail rates, yeah, just more engaged students. And then the students all reported, like even when I'm at home, I find that like I can come home and like leave it on the counter and then go do something and like, it's like you've decompressed and your brain has now changed. And it really, it is an addiction, a habit, or whatever you want to call it, that needs to be helped to be broken, yeah.
Yeah, it's a dopamine rush addiction. And so when you can start to break that, it's incredibly powerful. And it starts to trickle into everything else, so.
I was really struck by the descriptions of how the cafeteria was different, you know, cell phones? And how the kids were talking to each other and laughing and interacting rather than everybody being on their phones.
Down.
And, you know, just even in restaurants, you see it, like families sitting around a table and everybody's on a device as opposed to having a conversation. I just think that the whole tone of those interactions would be different.
Yes, and for student concerns, I feel like all of the students said too, it's different than, like it, everyone thinks like this is going to be terrible, all the students, this is going to suck. But once everyone's doing it, like nobody's blowing up Snapchat during the day or texting during the day because nobody has their phones. And so it was sort of this community, like, well, we're all in it together.
All together.
Yes, and yes, there's always going to be those exceptions. And yes, there's always going to be, is there the burner phone? Like all of those things were discussed and nobody's gonna, the wool is over nobody's eyes for what kids are doing. And all of the workarounds are out in the open for schools who have gone before us and done this. And so by and large, the culture was even though there's always going to be the sneaky whatever, there's going to be the burner phone, by and large, the culture is that you don't pull out your phone in the cafeteria. That would be like scandalous for you to pull out your phone, just because the culture has shifted.
Yeah.
And so really, yeah, so I feel like some sort of a system that me, if that means that the board has to then financially say that this is an important place to spend their money than that is important to me.
And then three of us, four of us have student five in the district. I see what my own son goes through in the high school transitioning from middle school where it's not, I mean, they're kept, it's just unspoken, I mean, they just, they're more rule followers. And seeing how he's changed going, sorry, you know, same, same too, you know, just you've seen, I've seen the shift.
Yeah.
I've seen the shift already, and so it's a personal tale.
Yeah.
Okay, so we want to lock up?
All right.
So.
We want to lock up.
Is that what we want, we want language in here that the schools will develop a system by which phones are constrained during the day?
Yeah. We don't have to, we don't have to spell it out, right? It was like, but they're not, so that they're inaccessible, whether that's yonder pouches or whatever, we can figure that out, but.
Yeah, and we will leave it to each building to determine what mechanism they use.
I did have.
If we're even talking about the middle school, are we?
I think we are, I feel like we should be consistent, at least from a policy perspective about that. And and I had some preliminary conversations with both Ms. Boulay and Dr. Gowers. And I think both buildings have a certain amount of those locker, cell phone lockers already. Dr. Gowers was going to do a little survey of the high school to see exactly how many we already had, because many classrooms already have them here. What would, they, the high school is, you know, I'm not going to speak for everybody, but based on my conversation with Dr. Gowers today, supportive of the concept, just wanting to figure out logistically how to be able to do it best in each building. So I think leaving it, making it clear in the language that we want the phones to be inaccessible during the day and then leaving it to the buildings to kind of figure out the best way to manage, like getting them, whether it's through advisory, whether it's through first block, whether it's, you know, there's going to be little nitpicky, like little details that are going to have to be figured out, like how does it work for vocational students, do they leave their phones in the front office? Or do, you know, there's, there's different pieces of it. But if we can get clear in the policy on the intention of we want them to be inaccessible, then we'll work with that and figure it out.
That is key for me to to approve this policy is that there's strong language that says, yes, the individual's buildings can develop what they need to be.
A hundred percent.
It cannot be in your backpack, just can't be seen, it has to be.
Or locker.
Yeah.
Yeah. Gosh, we sound like a bunch of mean ogres.
Honestly, and the biggest ways are like, you gotta just like do it and it's really not that big of a deal.
It's a two week transition period, right? Is what you guys heard, we're hearing is two weeks, and then everyone's like, oh, this is the new normal, okay.
Well, and I think it feels like we're taking something away by doing this, but I think a couple of my colleagues in York have really reframed it for me and said, no, this isn't about taking something away, this is giving kids a gift.
Giving them something back, I love that.
A cell phone free day.
I love that.
Like giving them a gift, like let them be kids.
Well, that's what it is, yeah.
We have to focus on the why.
Yeah.
Creating space for them to learn and to shut their brain down and have space to learn.
And it's evidence based, like.
It is, right.
Yes.
You're talking about everything from connection to mental health and well being to.
Addiction.
Right.
So I actually have a language suggestion that I think may cover that.
Yeah, perfect.
In the second paragraph, student designated superintendent designated family of middle high school administrators develop detailed procedures for ensuring cell phones and other personal electronic devices are inaccessible during the school day.
Like that, yeah.
That sounds great. And then is there, there are under exceptions that notes things like.
Like if you have a Luco smart or something.
Right, right, right.
That would be driven by like an I E P or 504 in most cases, yeah.
I like that joke.
So I'm going to remove, I'm going to work with Becky, and we'll remove language that sort of implies that they can have it on airplane mode or have it shut off. Or we'll take that out and it'll just be clean and say inaccessible, yes.
And then how does, how would you guys feel about moving exceptions to the end, number two?
Sure.
Towards the end of the policy, does that make more sense?
Sure.
Or no?
I like that, yeah.
I like that.
Here's the policy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just a brief comment, though, I think that we should also maybe include that they have to still be in airplane mode or off, even if they are, because if you have the pouches and they're on, you can still hear them, the vibration, the verification. So that might be important to still include that.
Or even in the lockers, if you've heard someone's phone going off.
Off and inaccessible?
Yeah.
Yeah, and off, yeah.
That's a good point.
That's a good point.
Plus it'll save your battery.
Number 12. Monitoring and updates, there's language there that says, and lessons learned in the implementation. I thought maybe opportunities to improve or revise, like.
Yeah.
I don't know, just sounded a little.
Instead of lessons.
The district.
Yeah, I don't know, it sounded a little more, opportunities to improve, yeah.
Challenges.
Sure, or, yeah.
And that was, a lot of this came from Portland's policy because they implemented this this year and they had that like.
We'll see how it goes.
We'll see how it goes, we'll check in, we'll, you know, and we tend to do that anyway with with more complex policies, but I just think, I think that's important that we revisit.
Yes.
The other thing that we don't address in this policy, but I do think we need to address in our conversations at some point is what the expected rollout timeline for this is.
Yes.
You know, there's, I know that there's some will on. You know, there's, I know that there's some will on the board for this to roll out maybe in second semester. I am supportive of that. I just think that we have to see financially, like, if we have the resources that we need to do this the way we say we're going to do it.
Depend, yeah.
If we don't, we may need to wait until September so we can budget for some of these things.
September of next year.
Yeah, start of the next year. Just because it would be, we'll, we'll have all of our equipment budgeted.
We may find out that we already have 40 of these lockers, and we just need to buy 20 more. I, I don't know. But I, I, I'll gather that information over the next week or so.
MEF. We will figure it out.
So I'm hearing there's a strong will among all of you to start this in January.
Yeah, or as close, or as close to that as. I think with the Christmas, the, excuse me, the holiday, like, break would just be a nice, like, opportunity to start fresh in the new year. Yeah.
January 1, kind of a thing.
Okay.
Yeah, it's possible.
Yeah.
To see.
Okay. Any other comments about this?
Thank you, Policy Committee, so much.
So, with the language changes we've made, the ensuring cellphones inaccessible and off during the school day, moving exceptions to the end, and in number 12, changing lessons learned to opportunities to improve.
Yeah.
With those changes, and probably more expected at the second read, all in favor? That's five oh.
Thank you so much.
We have a first read on both of those.
It's exciting to be this far. Yes, thank you, these three. Yeah.
It's so nice to be there.
I'm excited to go dive into those notes.
Last item of new business is a motion to approve a project graduation committee funding request. Anyone want to make that motion?
Sure. I move to approve Project Graduation Committee to hold an online auction in March 2026 with all proceeds going towards the cost of Project Graduation.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, and although the motion refers to the March 2026, it's coming before us because they'd like to do this on an annual basis rather than just this year.
Something they've been doing in previous years. It's an online auction for Project Grad. You get donations for various items, and it raises a lot of money, and even though it might be different volunteers that sort of manage it each year, is it one of those things that Project Grad kind of wants to be able to pass on to each successive group as a fundraiser?
They do also want the two sets of four.
Yes, the four parking spots.
And four parking spots.
That's funny.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? There's also five oh. Very good. Okay, that brings us to the end of new business. We have a period of building administrator chicken.
Ah, yes, I just want to thank our PTO, the whole month of October. My goodness, it's been amazing. We started our monster mile kickoff in the first week. It feels like a long time ago now, but the first week in October, just with the cheerleaders, and our PTO's been working so incredibly hard towards our monster mile. It was supposed to be last Friday, but the weather kind of tricked us, and we postponed it till this Friday. So, we just got the last count, we've, they've raised $48,000. It's the highest we've ever, ever raised at Central School, so it's just, the kids are so excited. And I cannot, like, Christina Towers and Beth Terrio, they're at school every day, moving the monsters, handing out prizes, talking about, like, different kids get to pick spirit days and crazy, it just, it's so much fun. And they've convinced us on this, this Fri, on the monster mile on Friday, that the staff's going to have an inflatable costume run at the end as a gift. So, the big news yesterday is I got to send out the sign-outs to, every teacher got to pick their inflatable, and it was like a race to get the cow or whatever. Oh, yes, yes. So the kids know there's going to be the inflatable, they don't know what we're going to be dressed as. So, we're hoping that we just stay upright for the, that's our, their goal, so. It's going to be Friday, so we're just really, really excited. And again, the PTO also just sponsored our dinners for our conferences, and we had one parent, Emily, that was, I think, at our school all day, just making every little detail look beautiful. So, just, I guess, so appreciative of our PTO.
Thank you.
I know where the lockers are coming from.
That's right.
So, I just, a few things. One, I, I had told you back in October, the, the fifth grade chorus was going to go to the Maine Mariners, and they were going to sing the National Anthem. And so, we took 100 kids up on a Sunday afternoon. Again, it's a, a Sunday where, where folks are volunteering their time. And probably through the second period, one of the, the people that are there all the time, what do they call them, the people that are, season ticket holders? Season ticket holders, comes over to Matt Taylor, the band teacher, and he relayed this message to me. He said, he said, I am at every game. Did I go to every game here? He said, I have never seen a better behaved, more entha, enthusiastic group of kids than your kids. And so, I mean, it's just, I mean, they were yelling for a fight, they were yelling, I mean, we, we lost, but they were just, every time there was a, a song came on in between, our kids are up and dancing, and it was just, I mean, it was impressive. Jen talked a couple of things that happened at the great works. We did a farmer's market the other day, and thanks to Karen and the food service. And it was, it was wonderful, because we ended up, kids had, had money to be able to come through. They had local, like broccoli and potatoes and carrots and all sorts of things. And there was one kid that was telling me, he said, you know, I don't really like broccoli, but my dad likes broccoli. But they went out with a shopping bag full of, of, of food, and it was really, it was, it was great. Monday, we had a glow run, and so Sarah Lindgren has a, a running club. And so, what she, back in September, she goes, you know, we have daylight savings times, you know, we've got the next day off because of voting day. Why don't we have a glow run? So, six to seven o'clock, I mean, we had, I bet we had 120 people there. And, and I mean, this was families, so it was grandparents, it was, you know, parents. Some kids were just walking, some kids were running, but it was, it was just a wonderful event. And Sarah had said, you know, if, she goes, if we don't have to call, because again, it's dark out there, we've got some lights, but it's, it's still pretty dark. And she goes, as long as I don't, we don't have to call 911, we will have a second, we'll have a second one next year. So, I think we'll have one next year. And our Veterans Day assembly is, is tomorrow. We were really bummed. We were talking to the liaison from, from the shipyard. And, because we always have folks that are docked here, and because of the, the government shutdown, shutdown, we, we can't have those. We can't have the sailors. And it's really, that's kind of one of the best parts of it, because the, the kids have questions about what is life like? And, you know, and so, we don't have those folks. And the other great part about that is, when you have the veterans, and you have these people that are serving, and you go to breakfast, and, and they are, you know, talking about, that, that interaction, so we're going to really miss that. But we didn't even think, you know, anything about it when I talked to Kristen Ferello from the shipyard the other day. She goes, I, she goes, I just can't get anybody. It's, so, we're, well, we'll have a great time, the kids will, will, you know, I got goosebumps today as they were singing, practicing, but that's tomorrow.
Thank you.
So Mrs. Schistler's not here tonight, because her daughter Lorelai had their, they had their field hockey banquet tonight, senior, so. But I will just say, kind of echoing what Jerry said, I was able to go to the veterans ceremony at Elliott this morning. They did a wonderful job. It was all outside. The new music teacher, Mrs. Ma, did a fantastic job preparing the kids each grade level sang songs. There were a few words, and then they did a flag planting, so each of the second and third graders planned a flag around the flagpole outside. So if you drive by Elliott Elementary, you'll see all the flags out there. It was beautifully done. The kids were so respectful and appropriate, and it was just a really nice way to spend an hour.
It's amazing.
Last thoughts from the board? I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session, please.
I move to enter into executive, I move to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussion of personnel issue pursuant to Title I, MRSA subsection 4056A.
Second, Lisa.
All in favor? Five oh, we are in executive session. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm just like, where is he working?
We're good.
Okay.
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 So we are out of executive session at 9:11. I have two motions to make. The first is I move that we accept the resignation of John Caverly as superintendent of schools effective 6/30/26 in accordance with his contract.
I'll second, Lisa.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's 5-0, thank you. And the second motion is I move to extend Heidi Early Hershey's term as interim superintendent at current compensation level through 6/30/26.
I'll second, Lisa.
Lisa, okay. Discussion? All in favor? That is 5-0, thank you. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn tonight.
America, Kate, all in favor? That is 5-0 and we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thanks for staying.
And good night.